Okay, it is 6:30 PM. We'll call the Monday, September 23, 2024. City Council meeting to order. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
I don't have any additions for tonight's mayor.
Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. With that, we will move to public comments. If there is anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Tonight will be 18th and 19th city or township that I am.
And I'm sorry, just for the, for the.
Sure. Can you hear me? Jennifer Ray, and I live in Chanhassen, Minnesota, which is part of Carver County. And we all vote, apparently, everyone in this room, because in 2020, we had almost 100% turnout. My objective is to, number one, inform you of something, and number two, hoping you feel compelled to actually take an action item on behalf of yourself or on behalf of the council with the mayor. And the subject is absentee voting. And as you know, when you vote in person and you come and sign in and you pick up your ballot and you go and vote, everything is done in pairs of major party people overseeing the process. And to me, that seems pretty common sense. It's law. It sounds good. It doesn't seem racist to me. It doesn't seem like it's, you know, intimidating for someone to vote at the process when we actually vote in person, and I'm hoping you all agree with that. So I found this on the League of Women Voters website, and if we go to page two where it's highlighted, this is for absentee ballots. Now, in 2020, over half of our ballots were cast via absentee, and those are not counted or processed or anything at the city precinct level. Those all go to the county. So if we go to where it's highlighted, it says election judges are required to identify a party affiliation and then bolded because two election judges of the same party cannot work together. And then if we go to the next page, and we go to the next highlighted area, which is the third and last page that I have for you, then the ballots are removed from the ballot secrecy envelope. All steps, again in bold, of the counting process are done in pairs with two election judges of different parties. If we go to the safeguards, if a voter marked their ballot improperly, if you've been to a precinct and if you've worked as an election judge, or even if you haven't, once in a while, that ballot gets rejected. Somebody doesn't fill out a novel properly. I don't know why. I've never had one rejected, but it happens. So then it says, "A team of election judges of different parties," and that's bolded, "will go through and determine the intent of the voter. If the intent of the voter is not clear, the election judges will not guess." Again, bolded below with the highlighted, "This whole process is done with election judges of different parties all present." And we all agree that that does not sound racist, and it doesn't sound intimidating, and it doesn't sound like that is going to make somebody not vote. I mean, that's pretty common sense to sound like that's about right. Well, when it comes to our absentee votes, we don't do that here in Carver County. We don't have major party balance going through all the processes of A to Z. So my goal is to have the Carver County commissioners, who are in charge and do have the authority and the ability to pass a resolution that says we will have vetted major party balance in all processes of our absentee ballots and those who do the early voting, where they aren't putting them in the machine necessarily right away, through all processes, A to Z. And to me, that just sounds really common sense and like it's really low-hanging fruit, and it should be something that should be pretty easily accommodated and passed. So that's my request to you. If that sounds like a pretty easy thing to ask and to have process our votes in Carver County, then that's my request to you. And what I will do is email you. I think I've got emails for everybody. If I don't, I'll get ahold of somebody. And I'm going to send you from Rumble, we have the certification of the 2022 election. And on there, it states that we do not have that because there's a misconception in some of the city and county employees. I'm not sure where the misconception is coming through that we already do that. We don't. We haven't. And so it does state in there clearly, Kendra, our election clerk for Carver County, states multiple times that we do not do that in Carver County. What we do do is we have deputized city and county employees, and we give them the authority to be election judges. And I just want to note that in 2022, there were two parts of the law that had to be followed with election judges and not deputized county employees. One was opening and processing and verifying the signatures. The signatures by the two vetted Republicans, one did zero signature verification, and the other did a couple hundred out of 13,000. So we did not have vetted major party, even doing what the law said was part of it. The other part that was mandatory and not left up to anyone's indiscretion or discretion was to have that part where I said, if it's rejected, and we had over 13,000 ballots that were put through by two gals that work at the county at night at eight o'clock without anybody else there. And we did not have major party balance reduplicating those, adjudicating those, whatever terminology you want to use. In 2022, they just did it all on their own. So I'm just looking for transparency and oversight. I personally don't think that's too much to ask. I'm hoping that isn't too much to ask, that you think that that is for anybody. So I am requesting, and we're getting to the end of the runway, so I will be requesting that, and I'm hoping that you even personally, if you feel strong enough that, hey, we should do that in Carver County for the mayor, people who vote and decide that they're going to vote via absentee so that they can have transparency and accountability in their votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We'll take them under consideration. So anyone else for public comments?
Good evening. Thank you for five minutes of your time.
Five minutes.
Similar messages, Jen. My name is Al Sherwood. I live in Chanhassen. And absentee and mail-in ballots, as we all know, has both potential for fraud with major issues on identity theft, lost ballots, and chain of custody issues. A certain administrative rule in Minnesota has made absentee voting a major election integrity issue with regard to signature matching. State law requires that the voter must have signed the absentee ballot. The Secretary of State's office, along with an OK from a Minnesota Court of Appeals, has in place Administrative Rule 8210-2450, which now allows for any voter to sign an absentee ballot. Instead of making the common sense determination that the law requires that the same person sign the application and the ballot, the court essentially held that any person can sign any ballot for anyone without limitation, even if there is a signature mismatch. According to the rule, the ballot must be accepted unless the names are different. As Jen said, the majority of votes cast in 2020 were absentee. Does it give you any confidence knowing that any person can sign any absentee ballot for anyone? With regard to party balance, to add to what Jen has said, Simon's rule also subverted legislature's intent that party-balanced election judges from the major parties accept or reject all absentee ballots. His rule makes election judges who keep the vote honest completely unnecessary on ballot boards and allows government staff to accept and reject ballots, even when the law says they must. Ballot boards look like black boxes to me. Their work is done behind closed doors. I realize counties and townships are told what to do and what not to do by St. Paul, but I call on Carver County to be more transparent with their ballot boards. Video surveillance of drop boxes does not prevent people from putting in more than one ballot. This is a huge chain of custody issue. Wisconsin and other states have in place provisional ballots, or they have outlawed them, and I call on Minnesota to do the same and outlaw drop boxes. Although it was a nationwide survey, given all this, it's not surprising then to see that a recent poll by Rasmussen alongside the Heartland Institute found that in 2020 election, one in five people who voted by mail committed some type of voter fraud, and this is, by the way, according to these people's own admissions. Lastly, I believe that same-day registration is fraught with election integrity issues. Once again, Secretary of State Simon prioritizes convenience over security by turning a blind eye to the same-day voter registration process that allows anyone to register, vote on election day, and have their vote counted without verification. Forty-seven other states have in place provisional ballots, which sets these ballots aside to be counted after they're verified. I call on Minnesota to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Deb Parish. I have a mayor phone number, but I'm the first house that's Cologne mailing address on the edge of town. The, we have been talking to the county commissioners for a couple of years and have become greatly concerned over the whole process. Fifty percent, our number-one concern is fifty, more than 50% of the ballots that were cast for presidential election in 2020 were absentee ballots. There is currently no signature verification. As he said, anyone can sign and send it in. There is no, there is no party parity in most of the process. The only process, there's only two parts of the process where they even allow party parity judges that have requested to be in the room. And one was, used to be the signature verification. What was the other one?
The other one is duplication.
Yeah, yeah, that, just when they're rejected. And we did find out that they're doing that rejected ballot process at night with just one or two employees taking on the responsibility of doing that. They need to follow the law. They need to have party parity throughout the whole process as the law prescribes. And we're, you'd be shocked if you really looked into the actual process that's being used in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comments, and we will move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion. Second.
A motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. With that, we will move to the Southern Valley Alliance for Domestic Violence Awareness. Kristi?
Yes.
I assume. Perfect. If you don't mind introducing yourself, or Nick, if you want to say something first.
Take it right away.
Sure. Sounds great. Sounds good. My name is Kristi Larson. I'm the Executive Director of Southern Valley Alliance, and just really appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight to talk a little bit about our organization and also about October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So for those of you that don't know about Southern Valley Alliance, we are the only comprehensive provider of domestic violence services for all of Scott and Carver Counties. We're a nonprofit organization and were founded in the early 80s. Until last year, we were always located in Belle Plaine. But in January of 2024, we opened up a brand-new domestic abuse advocacy center in downtown Shakopee, just to be kind of more centralized between the two counties and provide better accessibility for the clients that we serve. Since January, we've really seen a tremendous increase in the number of clients we're seeing every single day. Just in the last year, we served 1,118 clients, which was a 27% increase over the year before. Also, calls to our 24/7 crisis line have increased. That was an increase of 23% over the last year, which equates to a total of 2,251 calls. Last year, we also commenced a brand-new transitional housing program. It's the first of its kind in our community. Southern Valley Alliance has seven scattered-site apartment units where victims and their families can stay for up to 12 months when they are fleeing domestic abuse. During that time, they're receiving really intensive case management services to assist them in all aspects of their stabilization and safety. So we work on housing, education, childcare, financial education, employment, job search assistance, and more. We're seeing really great success with these clients, and this program truly has been life-changing for many of them. We continue to get the word out in our communities about the availability of these critical programs, and I'm here tonight to help ask for help with that task. Nationally, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the perfect time to spread word about Southern Valley Alliance and the services that we provide. So I invite you to connect with us via social media and help share our posts. We have yard signs available to purchase that we encourage residents to place outside their home or place of business. And if you're interested in giving back by giving your time, we have lots of opportunities for volunteer engagement as well. So if you want to learn more about our organization and the work that we do, you can follow us on social media at Southern Valley Alliance or on our website at svamn.org. Thank you so much.
You have all the contact information.
Yep.
Okay, wonderful. Did you have any questions at all?
You work with Carver County Sheriff's Department, and they're well aware of everything. So if they.
Yep.
Domestic.
Yep, very closely. Yep. So there's 10 different law enforcement agencies throughout the two counties, and all of them, when they're going out on a domestic violence call, they're filling out a report that they then send to Southern Valley Alliance, and our advocates are following up with all of the victims from those cases. Yep, yep. And I'll also just leave some flyers. I saw one in the entryway, but we have our Purple Patch Program where we sell patches from all the law enforcement agencies to raise money during the month. So I'll leave some of those as well. Okay, yeah, okay. Yes, okay. Yes, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Wonderful. And with that, then, we will move to consider the adoption of Ordinance 245, amending City Code Chapter 71 regarding winter parking regulations.
Thank you, Mayor. From our work session last time, I posted the ordinance to our website to make sure we're complying with the posting requirements for ordinances, and that was posted for the requisite 10 days to comply with state law. The ordinance hasn't received any changes since then, since we had our workshop the last go-round, so we would be looking at adoption if council so wished.
Thank you. And for Nick, not to put you on the spot, but for the public, could you quick highlight what the proposed changes are?
Sure. So how the current ordinance reads is that between November 1st and April 1st, if there is an inch or more of snow, then vehicles must be off the street. Some of the issues we're running to is measuring that one inch. On some parts of town, it would get blown around, and there wouldn't be any, but then they would have two and a half inches on another part of town. So judging when that would happen was a bit of a bear. There was also a secondary layer that wasn't enforced quite as much, that outside of those, that date range, if there was two inches of snow or more, then a snow emergency could be declared and towing could happen. To clean that up, went to, well, we kept the November 1st to April 1st. And then the new language is that from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, there is no parking on the streets if there is any accumulation of snow, even if it's currently snowing, if it had snowed. There's any amount, it must be off the streets until plowing operations are complete. I think this has a benefit of having a defined time range, whereas before, the one inch could be any time of day. And you'd have to go out at any time to get your vehicle moved. Now, residents know that between 2:00 and 6:00 AM is that window, and if they know that, if they look at the forecast and they see that snow could be coming, or snow has already fallen, just make sure it's off the street, and we should be good to go. Outside of that 2 to 6 range and outside of the November 1st to April 1st range, we do not have towing enforcement measures. So that gives some security to the residents as well.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it's a good step in getting the word out to the public. So I appreciate that. Any comments or questions on the ordinance as presented? Hearing none, I look for a motion to approve Ordinance 245, amending the winter parking regulations.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Halt. Any further discussion? And you'll get a good plan together for education, and it'll be, you'll splash everything, social media.
Social media newsletters. We're, tomorrow, we'll get the order, we'll get the sign arranged. We'll get that ordered from Carver County. Those will go up on all entrances to the subdivisions and along the streets, so everybody will see that go up in the newsletter, social media, website, electronic sign.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. With that, we'll jump right into the site location for the Mayor Baseball Club storage shed.
All right, let me get right to that. So at our last workshop, we discussed a situation, well, not a situation, an opportunity to collaborate with the Mayor Baseball Club. They are currently looking for alternative storage space. They have pole tabs that they need to keep for, I believe it was a three-year period, and that's all the pole tabs that happened, so it consumes quite a bit of space. And their current storage area is, the rent's going up, so they had contacted the city about seeing if there's any available space here. We didn't have any on the interior of the building, but then we talked about a location on the exterior of the building where they could construct a storage shed on city property. They would pay us rent in a sum for that amount, that agreement to be coming at, I hope, the next meeting, to have that together for consideration. But for this, it's looking at the location of the site itself, and as you can see, and unfortunately, the people at home can't, but it's in the packet, just on the western side of the, of City Hall, we have a nook back there, which is about 16 feet by 27 feet in size, and the Mayor Baseball Club was looking at a shed that was about 12 by 20 in size, so it would fit right back there. Tucked away amongst some of the other things, we have the cell tower back there. We have the cell tower shed back there. It wouldn't impede on any of the existing asphalt. It wouldn't block any doors. It's just an unused space back there. And so this would go well to help reduce their costs, and the money that the baseball club can save is money that goes right back into the community.
Thank you. And which side is the proposed door going to be?
I will be meeting with Dean from Mayor Lutheran, who is proposing, their class is looking at constructing the shed. I'll be meeting with Dean on-site to go over details on what it'll look like, making sure it blends in, and then figuring out which side the door will go on, so.
And I'm only asking because I'm just curious if our cameras will happen to capture, capture the doors, so.
I'm assuming a southern-facing door.
Would be easiest access.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. All right, any other, any questions for the city administrator or comments? Hearing none, then, I'll look for a motion to approve the site location for the proposed storage shed for the Mayor Baseball Club.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to state for the record that I am a member of the baseball club. I do not stand to have any personal gain from this decision, so I will be voting.
Thank you. And yes, I agree with that. There's certainly no conflict of interest with that, so any other comments? And we got, did we get a motion on this? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And with that, I'll look for, or we'll move on to the adoption of a resolution adopting the 2025 preliminary levy and budget.
Thank you, Mayor. And our last item for business is levy, the preliminary levy for 2025. So just as a recap, we've been working, anybody watching, we've been working in workshops on the 2025 levy and the budget. There has been no changes to it since the last workshop from the last council meeting, so what we're seeing presented here is the exact numbers that we had from the last go-round. So to go through that, for the general fund levy, looking at $450,166. And how the preliminary levy works for those at home is, once we set the preliminary levy, we can lower it in December, but we cannot raise it. So this is the maximum amount for the total levy that we can bring forward. Under capital improvement, for the fire department CIP, $150,000. Under streets, $110,000. For parks and recreation, $75,000. Asphalt sidewalk replacement, $125,000, and the general CIP, $40,000. And this category is for capital improvement projects, so for the fire department, this is putting money away so that in the future, if we need to replace a fire engine or anything like that, the money will be sitting in the fund, and we can go ahead and make the payment when that comes due to make the purchase of the equipment. Under debt service, we have, for the 2020 A bond, $24,452. For the 2021 A bond, $232,166. Excuse me. For the 2021 B bond, $45,055. And then for the 2023 A bond, $68,040. And this is debt service according to the schedules which were approved at the time when the debt came out. So in total, between all of those, the total levy we're looking at is $1,319,879, which compared to the 2024 levy would be a 2.11% decrease in the levy. So we were, our levy is going down by 2.11% for 2025. And with that, that is our resolution for the 2025 preliminary levy.
Thank you. With that, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-12, adopting the 2025 preliminary levy and the 2025 preliminary budget.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Well, thanks again, Nick, for making it easy.
Yeah, absolutely.
And understandable.
That, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And with that, we will move to council reports. Councilmember Fauch, anything to report on? Councilmember Wagner?
Nothing.
Councilmember Halt?
Uh, just music in the park this weekend, one to four, Saturday.
Old School House Park?
Old School House Park.
Thank you. And Councilmember McNeely?
No, nothing.
And I have nothing to report on either, as I have had no meetings since our last council meeting. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by McNeely, second by Halt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. With that, we will jump right into the workshop. We'll call the order.
Thank you, Mayor. So coming back for a second time, after the discussion the last go-round, we have our water shut-off ordinance amendment proposal. I haven't changed any of the language from last time. There was a request to have numbers researched by staff. We did get those numbers out to City Council in an email, and then also on the updates here before the council meetings. So hopefully, we've answered all of those in good order. So what we're coming back to, there wasn't too much, from what I remember, and please correct me, there wasn't too much discussion on quite a bit of the process. What it came down to, I think, was the date that we wanted to pick for when utility bills would be due, actually due on. So for recap, for those that are listening, the way our current ordinance has it is that utility bills are due on the first of the month. However, penalties are not applied until the 10th, which makes the 10th the de facto due date, because there's no, there's no penalty for not paying before the 10th. So I, unless there was another aspect that I wasn't recalling on the last one, I think it came down to, do we want to discuss when that, when do we want that due date to be, the first or the 10th?
Any thoughts? Comments?
Is there any? What are the pros and cons to having a due date of the first versus the 10th?
The first aligns it a bit more to, after we've done the reading, then we can crank the bills out right away. We're not holding that for 10 days. Administrative, it's not major.
I guess that's what I'm, that was going to be my question, like, what? If it's the 10th, is it going to hurt anything? So that way, we can just keep with what people are kind of used to.
Please, if there are any aspects you would like to chime in on?
Guess for me, moving it to the 10th kind of buttons it up, because otherwise, you're dragging out utility bills like. dragging out utility bills like a month and a half. So September 1st, they read the meters for the August water usage. But then that's technically not due until October 10th. So you're always a month and a half behind on the billing.
Okay. So, so it is.
Did you mean the 10th or did you mean the first?
Well, they do the first, but then if the late fee doesn't go until the 10th.
So it is, it is problematic then to have it, if we would switch the date to the 10th.
It's been working. I mean, if you keep it at the 10th, it's gonna continue the way it has.
Okay. So then.
Are we concerned with like the frequent flyers that we're not shutting off or the penalties themselves? Like, is it two separate issues?
I think, I think in our experience with previous cities and utility billing, I, the penalties will be what the penalties will be. I think it's the frequent flyers that are consistently on. Now, as we're getting to the end of the year, do you recall how many are on the?
The last time I ran the delinquent test, we found a hundred and sixteen properties.
That were delinquent.
So this would potentially cut that number significantly down, I'm assuming, because we would then shut the water off after two months versus just lapping it on there.
So if I recall, the last go around, last year, I think we only had, don't quote me, I think it was twenty-something properties that we assessed last year, that actually went to the county and got assessed. Now, the number starts at a hundred and something, and then it wittles, we send out letters. In October, we're gonna send out the letters because we will do the certification in November. People get the letters, they will call in, they'll start paying it off, but.
Yeah, see, we gotta change that. I agree.
I think we can run more efficiently.
Yeah.
City by changing it to the first. And what I'm seeing now, my bill doesn't come till between the 15th and the 20th right now. And I, like, I think most people aim for that first, that that's your due date. That only gives people two weeks, you know, to, now we're gonna get the bill at least a week early. We should have it by the fifth or seventh, correct? If we change, you know, if we're reading them right away. So I think from that aspect, it gives people a little bit more time to get your bill and plan for the first. In my mind, I always shoot for the first. I never take that, the 10 days anew into factor, which I think most people do that. So that's just my opinion on it.
So based on the data that you sent out, this is how many people paid from the first to the 10th?
First through the 10th, correct.
And so how many, how many customers, how many residents are there? How many bills do we send out in a month? So nine hundred and twenty.
Not quite.
So, I mean, we've got two hundred people.
A little under four.
You got, yeah, twenty-two percent of your people are paying in the grace period. Whether it be.
Because they want to or they can't, you know, that.
Exactly.
We don't know.
But a behavior that we've allowed to happen for, I think we talked, since the nineties or forever.
Yep. I think the efficiency outweighs it for the city to have that.
If somebody calls to regard a plan, we don't shut the water off if they're delinquent, you know, like where we like set up a payment plan or a process or whatever. If they reach out, then we don't shut off after two months.
Correct. So if a resident calls in, let's, let's say we move it to the first. I'll take a, they say, this doesn't work for me. The way my finances work, I pay on the seventh because that's when X, Y, Z happens. And that's when it works financially. If that person were to come in or call, email, tell us, I can't pay on the first ever. It's gotta be the seventh. What's gonna happen? We'd say, thank you for explaining that situation. We will set you up to pay on the seventh, and we won't charge you a late fee because you've, you've communicated.
Responsible.
You've communicated with the city, you've explained that situation. It's not gonna be everybody. People with specific circumstances, we give leniency to when.
And you can do that easily in our software system.
I was gonna say, I feel like we're going backwards. Any efficiencies we've gained, we're now manually one off with residents.
I mean, I get where Nick's coming from. You know, they're trying to be proficient and tell you straight up that this isn't working for me. And, and I get that. And I, and I feel the same. I would feel the same. I wouldn't wanna impose that on them either. But like you guys are saying, the first is the first. Well, you know.
If you're gonna change it and then have an entire list of exceptions.
Right.
You're not really gaining any efficiency.
Right.
True. But I think it goes back to Mike's point, how many pay between that because some of us are.
When does the auto pay come, come out?
How many are procrastinators, like, oops, I need to pay the bill? And that's the cycle they know. So that's what they fall into. And how many are in the exigent circumstance case?
Oh.
We don't know.
I said, we move to the first then and see how this plays out. We can always change it.
Can I just ask a dumb question? Where, where is this coming from? I know I've missed a couple of meetings. Like, was this like something, there's an issue, and that's why we're bringing this to the table? Or?
So we're looking at refreshing the ordinance to begin the shut off process. I don't know the exact dates and deadlines, or exact dates of when things happen. My understanding, shut offs used to happen. Then there was a period when they stopped, and they haven't been restarted again. All the cities I've ever worked for have done shut offs, and we have this very large frequent flyer list that we have. So to ensure people are paying properly and doing what most cities in my experience do is shut off, similar to that other private utilities do.
So this is kind of the processes you are, we're looking through all our ordinances and different things to find efficiencies, things that haven't been touched for a long time.
The thrust of this was to get the, the thrust of it was to get the process back in place to resume doing shut offs. I think the, the side issue we've run into is, is the first or the 10th? Because in our current ordinance, the due date is the first, but the penalties don't apply to the 10th. So the question comes before council, which date do you want? I think the rest of the ordinance, which was the thrust, is okay. And we're generally agree to that. It's, is it the first or the 10th?
Till they get the bill on the first. See, I'm sorry, everything's auto for me. So like, I don't know when I.
You would get it, if it was mailed, you'd probably get it by the 7th.
And it's due the following.
The following month on the first, three weeks later.
By the first, but I had till the 10th to pay it.
Correct. You had a full month.
So now we're just saying, when I, when I get it, I just have to pay it. There is no late, there's no.
No grace.
No grace period.
And they weren't sending out the bills until after that 10th, when they could file the penalty. So then we're not getting the bill until like the third week of the month.
Yeah, between like the 15th and the 20th, like.
So that seems not efficient.
Right.
So now.
We move it to the first with no grace.
And people have more time.
Theoretically.
To, to prep for their water payment.
Right.
And I think this is a great scenario here. I think that'll be a great learning tool. You know, if we do move to this, I'd love to see something like this posted on the website. I think that's a great.
Um, another question. So shut offs, it's not like heat where you, there's like, you can't do it from like, what, November 15th to March 15th, like water, there isn't any like state statutes that.
So for water, cold weather rule applies only if your primary heating source is derived from water.
Okay. And do, how do we know that?
They have to contact us. Cold weather, so the cold weather rule is not an automatic thing. You have to apply for it. It just doesn't automatically kick.
Okay. Okay. That's good to know.
So if I, with all, with mayor having eighty plus percent of the houses built within the last twenty-five years, the only houses potentially in the old parts of town that might yet maybe still have a source of water heating. But even then, some of those houses are still dating back to the nineties, which they wouldn't be using those sorts of systems. But if they came in and said, I have a primary heating source that is water, I need the cold weather protection rule, we would honor that from the water end of things.
Okay.
Cleans it up. I.
And we weren't, I mean, because like in the past, we've just, what, once a year, we get, we find out who's hasn't, we send out the letter, and then we put it on their property taxes.
Right.
And we don't want to do that anymore.
I would recommend not. We may still need to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Right. You still.
Yes. I misspoke there. So yes, we'd still have to go through the certification process. The idea being if you have a, a current and regular shut off schedule, the hundred and something list is going to be far shorter.
Right.
This part of the year.
As you're following through. I think this cleans it up.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's clear, the first versus the 10th. This, I think we should move towards this. I would propose doing it January 1st. But I think if we have a concern with some residents, I would even consider waiving the shut off for the first three months to get residents, you know, where we wouldn't start shut offs till, you know, March, which is kind of the timeline anyways. But, you know, i- if we feel it's a, gonna be a hardship on some residents. But I think this just aligns with all our utility billing, our electric, our gas. It's no different. The date's the date. That's clear for us.
When you're.
Gray area.
But you're not really, if a person really thinks about you're not harming the resident in any way, shape, or form, other than potentially their payday, because they're actually getting the same amount of period to pay the thing. So, I mean, I think we're spending a lot of time on, I don't know, I'd go with the, like Mike said, January 1st, let's kick it off for the first of the month. And we'll put out everything we can and.
Because there's gonna be some education, because people are gonna, might get used to paying.
Yes.
Uh, during that grace period, because it worked best for their pay, payment, you know, their, how their money comes in. So it will be an adjustment for some people.
Right. And I would certainly want at least January 1st, if not later, to make sure we have that education go out. So everybody understands. So if somebody does make, need to make financial adjustments, they have more than just a snap month or two to try to rearrange their finances.
Well, yeah, and that's why Mike, I think, was saying like, March, you know, is when we'd really.
Yeah. I think we can figure something out with that, if, if we feel it's a concern.
Right. And you guys will know right away by how it goes in the first couple of months. So.
The biggest hardship I see, if we start at the first, they're gonna get their late fees starting January 2nd instead of the January 11th.
Right.
You know, so it'll be a late fee of what, five bucks?
Ten percent.
Yeah.
Ten percent of the bill.
Ten bucks.
So. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think education's just gonna be the biggest and.
I'm concerned how many residents are gonna call and what the administrative task is gonna look like and how much efficiency we're gonna gain.
I would say ultimately, I, first or the 10th, at least from the staff standpoint, aligning, there's efficiencies, but it's, it's not earth shattering, groundbreaking. Boy, this is gonna be night and day administrative type of stuff.
The point.
Minor improvements.
The biggest point is that we're gonna start enforcing shut offs.
Yes, that's the thrust.
So if that's happening, then we're achieving the goal of getting this frequent flyer list smaller.
And if it, if we do end up doing the first, as is the ordinance, and that turns out to be an absolute nightmare, the first is just, come back, amend the ordinance, change first to 10th, re-adopt the ordinance, and now it's 10th.
I was gonna say, we can always change things back, too.
All right. Anything else on that?
Yeah, but I feel like if you have, how many did you say we're on this list right now? Like one sixty-five or something? Hundred and sixteen? I mean, that's still almost ten percent. And that's quite a large amount of people.
Yeah. And if they don't know, if they know that their water's not actually gonna get shut off, they're gonna keep abusing the system, right?
That's, that's what.
That's what they're trying to eliminate with this.
Alicia and I can speak from our ten plus years of experience with utility billing. I mean, you've got twenty plus years with utility billing. You're, you get your frequent flyers, but the shut off process keeps, make sure they're not just letting that ride and they're just getting water for free.
Is that, um, okay, so, sorry, I have more questions. For, so not only administrative, now we have to have public works going and actually shutting water off.
Yep.
Um, in the winter, is that an issue, trying to find where the wa, like?
Our water shut offs are GISed, so they can open up their application, find its general location.
Okay.
Scrape it off, pull off, drop it down and twist.
Okay. So can you go onto somebody's property to do the shut off? Like, this is just weird questions, because mine isn't in the right of way.
Vast majority should be located within the right of way. But yes, we do have authority to go to the shut off and crank it off.
Yeah, because mine's, yeah, farther in my driveway than I think my right of way is.
Similar to how we have authority that if your meter's malfunctioning, we have right to give you notice and then come into your property to fix the meter.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Uh, oh, one more.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just trying to think, like, okay, so then the person pays it. So let's say they're like, your water should get shut off like on a Thursday.
Yep.
And they come and pay at like four thirty, but Public Works is already gone for the day. Like, how does that work?
We'll turn you on tomorrow morning.
Okay. And if it's a weekend, it'd be Monday.
We'll have our on-call people come and do the rounds.
So on-call people doing rounds can come in on the weekend and turn it back on as part of their, because there's always a person coming in for two hours on the weekends.
Okay. And since we didn't do this, they all know how to do this.
Yes. Yep. They all, they all know how to turn. They do have the wrench that they drop down and then crank it on and off, because that's part of, they know how to do that because that's also part of valve act exercising, the same similar, similar type of setup.
Okay. And other cities never had problems with this, like with water not flowing through and pipes bursting in the winter? I know, I'm asking just.
We always ensure that the property owner's there when the water gets turned back on, just in case something like that happens. There is a very, very, very minor risk of it, but we don't just jam it open to create water hammer. You slowly open it.
Okay. And I'm assuming water lines are below the frost line. So that's why you don't, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry. Just.
No, good questions. Good questions. So we would always make sure the property owner's there when we turn the water back on. That way, if there's an issue on the inside, for whatever reason, Public Works is right there to be able to turn it right back off to prevent an issue.
Okay. It's just something new, and we haven't done it since the nineties. So no, nobody's worked since, nobody in our staff has been here since the nineties. So I just want to make sure that.
Well, I think we've shut water off since the nineties.
The, the. Right, but like the regular.
The grace period has been since the nineties.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Like Kyle talked about last time, like having to do the door hangers and stuff. So he's obviously done it before, just not as often as.
Okay. I just want, no, I just want to clarify for you that.
Right. I'm not in Public Works, okay? I, when I first started, I was like, okay, so when I flush my toilet, what happens? That's like the level of education I had at the start. Okay, we can move on.
All right. Is that good for item two? Let's move to item three, then, the solar on public buildings grant program.
I'm not going to go through the slides that I included. That was from a webinar that the Department of Commerce gave to the audience at the time on, in there for education purposes. But it's a grant program I'm looking at, working on. It may not work for the fire station. I got some information over the weekend. But how it works is you can get up to sixty percent, well, up to seventy percent from the state. However, the way mayor ranks with their net tax capacity per capita, we'd be in that sixty percent up to seventy-two thousand. And then with the legislation that was passed a couple of years ago at, at the congressional level, cities and entities that don't normally pay taxes can get tax credits as direct payments. And that would be another thirty percent. So we could get up to, depending on the cost of the project, up to ninety percent paid for in grant funding if successful with this grant program. And so the two run concurrent. We don't have to apply for a separate federal grant. And then this as well, the programs run concurrent with each other. So it's one application for it. So I got the notification on this webinar for solar on public buildings. Watched the webinar. I looked at it and went, well, we could get ninety percent paid for through a grant. And the previous city I worked for, Fairfax, had an electric utility. And one of the things I learned is solar really doesn't pay unless you have a grant in order to pay for the vast majority of it. Minnesota Electric is just too darn cheap in order to make solar plant panels really worth it on a long-term scale for residential types of settings or small types of settings like these. But if you have a grant program like this, all of a sudden, it's right on the table because it brings that cost down. But if you have a grant program like this, all of a sudden it's right on the table because it brings that cost down. So we had looked at having it on the fire station roof. I have to do some checkings with a contractor and it's, whoops, wrong part of town. And there are contractors on the state bid system that I can reach out to, to get consultation with. Uh, looked at the fire station as the, uh, the one that jumped out the most and the analysis, um, the research I did on it. Has a large enough roof scape, but it is a ballasted roof, so there might be concerns there with the weight on the rock that is on top of the roof that might puncture the membrane. I have to talk with the architect a little bit on the roofing system and then I have to talk with the contractor from the state bid about how that array would go on a building. The ray itself needs about 3,000 square feet to fit under, a little under 3,000 square feet. So with those parameters, was looking at the spaces that might work. Fire hall roof is a potential, even the public works building roof would have enough space there. City hall would have enough space on our roof up here to house that. Or even if we needed to put it in a grid on a space over here, that could be done as well. I looked at those options first because we have, um, we, years, uh, years ago, the city signed up with a solar garden program where we buy solar credits from a comp, a third-party company. We receive those credits and those turn into savings on our XL energy bill. And we get about an eight point, I think it was 8.6% uh, savings on our XL energy bill. The cost difference between buying the credits and the XL energy bill. So our bill is 8.6% cheaper because we participate in the program. It's a good program to be a part of. But the fire hall location and the city hall location didn't have those credits applied. So if you built an array there, it would go right on to the, it would go straight towards reducing the utility bill in those areas. Why the fire hall, uh, looked good is because we'd be, with a 40 kilowatt array, uh, we'd be looking at producing a little over 50, 52,000 kilowatt hours per year. And the fire hall uses about 54,000 kilowatt hours per year. So it'd take care of 98% of the utility bill for the fire hall, just for having it exist. Some good cost savings there. If we did it for a city hall, we'd have to scale it down a bit because city hall uses about 40,000. It was a bit higher, but thanks to the LED upgrades and what have you, it's gone down, I think by about 20-ish percent for electric usage.
Can I just, something in my memory popped up. So have you mentioned this to Andy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, I only say that is because I recall when we were talking about building the fire station, they were going to, I can't remember if what we picked allowed them to do trainings off the roof.
The answer is, so the answer to that is known, I.
Okay, I can't remember where we fell on it, because I knew that was one conversational point, was that to do like repelling and that kind of stuff.
Right.
But I don't remember where we landed.
Yeah, so the roof that's on the fire hall is a ballasted roof, so it has the rock. So you have to be careful about how you walk on it because the rock can puncture through the membrane that's underneath. That's versus an EPDM roof or mechanically adhered, where it's actually affixed to the roof itself rather than, because the ballasted rock provides the weight to keep it down. If you have an EPDM roof, it's actually adhered or mechanically fixed to the roof itself, so it doesn't pull off.
I just couldn't remember. I know we talked about it. I can't remember if we picked the roof that you could train on or not. I, so if you talked to Andy and he would be, if that was a viable option.
Andy was out a bit for last week, so I did, I had emailed him asking about a local fire station roof. He got back to me on Saturday because he had been out of town. And that's where I'm coming back tonight. It's like, well, fire hall sounded really good, right up until I got the email from Andy on Saturday after the packets all went out. Now I'm coming back and say, well, if I were to, it's not that the project goes away, it's that we can shift credits around with the solar program.
Okay.
So even though they're allocated to buildings, I've talked to the company and said, yep, you can shift credits. It would have been cleaner and easier, and not that it's a monumental task by any stretch, but if the fire hall was able to do it, goes right off the utility bill, it's clean, we don't have to shift credits, anything like that. But to shift credits is not a big deal. Just contact the company, say this is how much we want to shift and they'll go ahead and do it. Um, so you could look at city hall for that. Otherwise. Look at the water treatment facility and the yard space right out front here. Want to make sure we keep enough for the car show, of course, we don't want to pinch them out, but we could use this area in here to put up the solar array. Or if we get out to the wastewater treatment facility, plenty of space out front here to throw up a solar array. Since the treatment facility upgrades are looking to be in the back, it wouldn't be affecting the front. And then we just shift solar credits.
Okay, um, I'll just be transparent, I'm not open to on the ground in the city next to the water treatment plant. I think they're ugly and I think there's a lot of unknowns about what's produced from solar. And I'm not interested in having that near residential or schools. So just transparency on, uh, where I would feel more comfortable, like on a roof, I'm okay with, but not necessarily fenced in and a few, like right next to where a lot of people are.
Sure.
So.
Yep, that's fair.
But treatment facility like that kind, those, I'm more open.
And do you know the lifespan of these panels?
They're usually warranted for 20 to 30, 20 to 25 years. But I'll be getting that, more of that information when I talk to the contractors about it. This is more of a kickoff.
Yeah, I think we should certainly pursue it and get more information.
Yep.
See what would be viable or not for us or, you know, any viable options.
Well, yeah, I mean, once the new facility is built, I mean, could we explore it at that time? Or, you know, a rooftop?
I would, so this is a program that comes around every once in a while. Uh, so I, we could take advantage of it in multiple rounds. So next year you could do it, the year after you could do it if it's available. It's only available to XL customers because part of your XL energy bill, if you list up one of those line items that listed on there as a fee funds this program.
Because if I'm not mistaken, that green, that first building is gonna go.
Yes.
Once the new stuff is constructed.
Might go, might get repurposed to something else. But down here, you're. Because it's gonna do that weird shifting thing.
And it has to be what, certain proximity to the building?
You want it close so you can get the electrical lines dug in for fairly lower cost. You don't want it way out there because now you're having to run an electrical line all that distance. So you want it fairly close to the facilities.
So even the roof and the two roofs behind that not large enough area.
These are ballasted. I'll be asking questions about them just to make sure. But if we're running into the same issues with ballasted, then we'd be looking.
Got it.
More research to do.
I think giving you the direction to pursue all our options and then we discuss, you know, you'll come back at what we can and can't do and then we.
Yep.
Make decisions there, but I think we should look at them all.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I'm kind of with Nikki, I'm not the, not necessarily a fan of having them on the ground.
Yeah, and they may come back, say they're, the roof is fine and you can do it there.
Most point, yeah. Well, I want to give it the overview to make sure I'm not, like, no, we don't want this at all.
I mean, even the ones out in the fields, like half the panels are working and not, I think it just looks really ugly.
Yeah, I think it's a little tacky.
So from the finance end of things, uh, so I talked with CERTS, which is the University of Minnesota's Clean Energy Resource Team. And they give free consultations as part of this program, so I had a good conversation with them. And, uh, the max size you can go with is 40 kilowatts. And the range of cost of that is somewhere between 115 and 140,000, depending. So I just went on the high side because that's what I do. Under the program, that would make the city share $26,000 if it was 140, if it was 115, then that would go down to 115 because then it would fall within the pure 90% range on that. So if you go on the high side of that, multiply, this may not be all inclusive of all the rates just because they have demand loads, they have base charges, things like that. So I went with the pure what I knew we would get refunded for. So if you take that rate, um, on any of the locations, if you built it out full, you'd be looking at a sub-six-year return on investment. And if the panels are lasting 20 to 25 years, the remainder of that would be pure savings. Similar to what we considered up, the ROI for the light, lighting retrofit here type of scenario.
Any other questions on that? Yeah, please, uh, please pursue it, get more information, see what, see if we have some viable options.
Sounds good. I will continue to pursue and bring back information.
Thank you. And with that, then we will adjourn.
I didn't add an hour.
Okay, so we're probably not having.